Is that loud?
A little bit.
Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the August ninth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission. The first item on our agenda is a continued public hearing, Frank and Judith Saunders, Seventeen Whitney Road, side plan TOB overlay zone thirty-one move bedroom units. Have you seen that? Mr. Mizuka? Would you ending you would like to share with us or start with us?
Sure, good evening for the record, Mike Mizuka, freshman here representing the applicant. And I'll just go over some of the revisions, which are pretty minor that we did to the plans. The question. Come up with staff and fire marshal regarding the access, emergency access. We, what we did was we provided. Means to get through. Our site. Off to the adjoining property, which is privately owned, so we can only go so far. We are at least providing access and we showed a brass paper area from the edge of the parking to the basically the property. Just installed it. And I also. Showed the. Turning movements, which I'll, I'll get to later on, so. We lost two parking spaces there to be able to negotiate turn off the aerial fire trucks, which I'll show you on the turn to movement plan. And we also, because there was some comments about the garbage, that's the location. So we moved it from essentially this area to here. And then. We lost two, two parking spaces there and two here, but we moved bike rack here. This location. And. We gave, put back three parking spaces in the area where the bike rack and the dumpster were. We did a little bit of trading, we ended up losing one space, but we still had an excess. We. Need fifty-three spaces and got fifty-nine, so we have six extra over the required of one point seven five per space. We modified the lighting accordingly, but because of the change in layout. We also showed a sidewalk, just sort of parallels the entrance driveway and brings you out to the road. Where, which connects into the sidewalk where we're posing along the frontage. It's a little curvy because of trying to just stay away from this. Concrete piers and small walls, we walk all around, so just try to weave around that. It's like utilities really didn't change really long. Site lighting plan again, just got updated because the light posts are relocated slightly.
Were they shortened?
No, no, just because the islands changed a little bit, so this, this light here was further up because of the loss of two spaces, so it just shifted over a little bit. These are all eight floor high. Yeah, we, we originally had fourteen.
That sounds right, thank you.
And reduced it down, but added a lot more because. These are the turning movements that I added. And. This shows the turning movements of the aerial trough across that. Brass paper area that would lead to sort of a level area right off the edge of the property that would go out to Wall Street eventually. Joining property, property owner agrees to that. Also show the turning movements for traffic coming in and then backing up, pulling it off, backing and turning to go out. This turning movement here is for the aerial trough, so it can pull up, they can back into this backing key, one backup and then drive out. So there's no need to back out of the site and the same thing over here, we only show coming in because if I showed this vehicle, the turning movements without backing up. Across here, it's here and they're driving out the line, there's so many lines, very confusing, you can see like here, it just gets a little bit. So that's, so that's that. And.
I'm sorry, is that a handicap spot where the garbage truck backs up and stuff?
No.
So what's that cross actually, is that a handicap ramp?
Oh, right here, they're not backing into it, but is it, it is a.
That is a handicap spot?
Yeah. We're not encroaching after that. So just go back to the site facilities as it shows. On the site plan, you can see that we have approximately, I think it was thirty-four hundred square feet of designated recreation area, but there's still. Almost twice or more than twice that, that's down in that area, it's already just the grass. But we add all of that together, you have almost twelve thousand square feet of recreation. Just going back to the site plan. So with regard to the, the TOB overlays, all this property is already within the zone, we're not asking it to be. For that overlays only be expanded to include this property. Just want to know a couple of things, the maximum building coverage in the TOB zone is seven percent, seven zero. We're at, with this building, we're at eleven percent substantially less. The regs state that the maximum building is a hundred and twenty feet, if it's over a hundred feet, they generally want you to. To be. Be kind of broken down on the roof line as well, and I think that's what Chris did, working with the town's architectural consultant. And. Again, the TOB purpose is to appeal to the greatest market segment possible, including millennials, baby boomers. Who are converging on smaller, more four-wheel units, we're seeing that just with the course of the things that we're doing, people are really downsized. So I already noted that we exceed the required parking of one point seven spaces for doing it. And also there is a mix of one, two, or three families. Families on. We have received comments from all departments and everybody has been, basically gotten the green light approval from them. The only one that was, I think, outstanding somewhat is the fire marshal, but. Again, we basically provided what we can to get access out of Wall Street and what we think is the best location in terms of the property. The drainage design. Again, I know there's some questions about that, but we, yeah, two long rows of four by four galleries. Designed for a twenty-five year storm event, the yard also designed to hold what they call a water quality volume, approximately one inch of rainfall. Which. It's somewhere around the two years more than, we're modeling it with the water quality volume. It's basically holding up to the, to your storm event without any discharge out of the system. I just want to go to. Because the applicant worked with staff, we, there were several iterations in terms of plans and one of them, this is one of them. That we had worked on early on, and it was two buildings, because part of the. I don't know, I want to say, what I did was to keep the building up close to the road. Now, originally there was going to be a mix of one and two bedroom units. Because basically out here, six department spaces would, you do the math, basically required parking, we only have thirty-four units. There's no difference between the parking requirement for studio. Efficiency unit, a one bedroom or two bedroom. Sixty parking spaces is good for thirty-four units rather than there, so you get a one bedroom porch. So. That's why there was a mix of one and two bedroom units, because it was two buildings more square footage. And so when the applicants started looking at it and there was a suggestion that there was a need for one bedroom units, it just felt like. Downsizing it, moving the building back was, was better than having this building, this large building up near the road. Because personally, I even said, I don't think it's the right fit for, for the property, and that's when the decision was made to. Take the building, put it back more parallel with facing the road, just one building and one bedroom units. That initially started at thirty-two, thirty-four to thirty-two, and then the building that we're holding now is, it ends up only thirty-one bedroom units. And, you know, there was a little bit of comment about painting walls, but. The painting walls here and there are relatively small, I mean, they're not, I'm not talking about the routine walls that you see out in Target. They're staring in the face, they're facing a lot of traffic, not really seeing these, routine wall down here is basically the porch area. Nobody's really seeing that at all, these here, basically the opposite, you're not really seeing anything from the road because they're lower. But those are, those are the changes that we need and sort of in the beginning into where we are right now. I don't know if Chris has anything to add, he might be just here for his questions that may come up, but the rendering is there, you can see that. You know, the lines of the facade are broken off, there's patio areas on, on units, and I think. Talked about shaving the cable lines now at the end of the building down, just to address that issue, I think Chris was the, as I said, the architectural consultant. So you make sure that she was pleased with the plan. Yeah, I think Chris did a great job developing a nice, nice looking building. So, open up the questions, we're happy, Chris, you want to add anything?
Sure, Chris Snow, BBS design, project manager. I just want to clarify just a few things, I did take through my file. Your original proposal, I don't have full plans unfortunately, but just to give you an idea of your original proposal we have for this building, much more master scope. If I can put it side by side, you have three full stories on the side. You have pit roofs, one on this roof. All in the same plane, and the red tie was much higher by four feet. Lower this building quite a bit, and put the end up to make it look like a two-story here. And on the side, it looks very boxy too, see. Well, there's this nice classic colonial cable at the end, got rid of the plus, got rid of a lot of height, just to get the building down more. Got this nice shed dorm on, so the building is more attractive from outside, not just, you know, front. And I just wanted to bring that up, the other point that, I think one of the board members last hearing brought up the fact that. The current building is designed with. Handicap units. Because the client has something in mind, that's not the case at all. The reason why the building's designed for ADA units, bathrooms, clearances, is because first and foremost, anytime you have a permanent building. The building code triggers. High grade type E type units, which means they have to be accessible. High bay is more stringent, high B is a little more relaxed, we have to meet at least twenty percent of the building code. Type A units, now, the other thing that triggers the different location of these units and others similar. Is the fact that because we have to have affordable housing units, they have to be provided at any floor in the building. In case somebody wants to live at the third floor, they have to have the same ability as somebody don't want to live at the first floor. So that's why every single unit was designed to be ADA accessible. And it can be converted to such if needed. So, the reason it was designed like that is because of building code, not because the client has something in mind for a specific reason or.
Next one, one more thing, please, kidding, for the record again, Mike Mizuka, freshman here. Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the, the allowable for maximum density in the TOB for, for this sort of project is thirty units per acre. So, we take the number of units. Divided by our lot area, we're about seventeen units per acre, or about fifty percent of the thirty units, that's, that's allowed. And also, just want, I know we talked about this, but I just want to reiterate the fact that the building is going to be totally sprinkled. So.
Air pollution.
Yes.
Yes.
Edith.
So in terms of safety, you can't get much higher rating, take the rates, safety rating than having the building fully sprinkled.
Okay, just a couple of, just a few things that I just wanted to. That's where I could, to address some of the comments that the applicants made tonight, and also regard to the TOB jet. Can you all hear me down there? Okay. Some of you spoke about this with some concerns regarding the occupation of the TOB jet. Regards to the occupation, main thing that the TOB was created for was to allow for you to be flexible in determining the. Appropriate locations, different types of housing and things of that nature. You go through the TOB plan, you will see that there is constant, constant comment made about human scale architecture. So the first question is, is how is that meeting those needs? In regards to the surrounding, you know, human scale, we're talking about architecture, we're talking about flexibility of keeping a neighborhood. You're creating neighborhoods, you're adding to the neighborhood, some of you have expressed concern about mass, the one building. With that amount of units, and I'm speaking for several members of the commission individually, and that. In regards to this particular property, there is a difference, this is in the double R ten, so. Your concern is, it doesn't mean that you can come in and construct a three-story, thirty-unit building without meeting the human scale of the architecture involved. So the question really becomes, you know, we're trying to get away from them. We're, we're, I mean, we're not getting away from human scale, we want to maintain the consistency of neighborhood feeling, that good environment that people have. When you're talking about human scale architecture, so any decision that you make is going to have something to do with that relationship. Between the structure or the property that is being proposed on and the adjacent property in which it falls. And this part of a sense of a natural order, an environment that gives a reasonable, good reasonable size and shape for what is proposed. So again, I go back to the TOB plan, some of you have mentioned human scale development, and the question still is, how is it meeting? That after you've done a sidewalk, you, you are familiar with the property in the area, how is that meeting the TOB plan? And the regulations proposed, the regulations are to be used as a strong. Effort to allow a property owner or an applicant to have the diversity to create nuances in neighborhoods. And I keep saying neighborhood because that's where you are talking about, this in neighborhood. To create and add to an existing neighborhood, to keep things on human scale. Oh, yes, you did.
Thank you.
Did you make sure you speak?
It's in the drive, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I missed it, no, I was wondering about the police commission report.
Go to the.
I did, I, I.
It's printed out.
See, I'm sorry.
I just want to read for ten minutes. I, I don't think I can see that far. We just go. Police commission had a, a special meeting on July twenty-eighth. If you notice on the screen, it says seventy, what he wrote, Lieutenant Durkin evaluated the traffic of what he wrote for the proposed development and found no potential traffic issues. Mr. Clary made a motion to accept Lieutenant Durkin's findings, seconded by Commissioner Clary, all in favor, motion was approved, and that's all I see.
Yeah, because that was the only outstanding thing we have.
I do have a memo from a fire marshal where I don't feel it's going to be necessary to leave the hearing open, he needs more clarity as far as emergency access. Again, with the lines, Mike, but it, it's something that I think could be handled between you and.
Yeah, question, relating to that subject. Um, is it up to you to go to the person, the property owner, where the emergency access would be? To, to get an okay that, that can be used?
Yes.
I'm asking. It can be requested, but we're, they're, they're absolutely under no obligation unless, you know, they're in a similar situation where. They apply for land use permits in the, in the similar situation like we are in and they.
I, I just a question.
Get requested to do the same thing and that you have the right then to go through. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't.
You sound, you sound correct on what you're saying, also, the fire marshal needs to look down to see if it is.
Okay. Is that okay?
Yes.
That's, that's.
Okay. Members of the public, if you would like to speak, please come forward and give your name and address.
Hi, Allison C. Train, I'm about fourteen hours from happy, and I've submitted a couple of things to the community. I agree, I think the transit oriented district overlay are within that, the, the zone number in, same with family to within the residential. I will respectfully disagree because I'm not sure how many three families are between the two streets. And if you count the houses on either of the streets, you're talking about thirty houses or less on your floor. So in effect, you're putting thirty more residences in a small street state. Also, the scale, when you're talking three-story tall building up against a story to maybe two-story tall buildings, and even if you go down that end of the block. That's just huge. Understandably, the breaking up the hundred and twenty foot long building with a facade like you have it. I guess it's just a matter of interpretation of the transit oriented district guidelines, which you would still have to put over here because it is a car, car double ten. But I keep learning these things, I am not a professional engineer, I'm not, you know, background is in education, but I am a member of the community. And so completely understand wanting to do something with a lot that's not doing anything right now. It would be so welcome to have something that fit, something that fit in with sidewalks, like you all saw, it would be a lovely sidewalk, but it goes nowhere. So where are we at the end of the day? I do have questions, I had reached out to the police commission and I will again after that report, because that's where I should direct those questions, but there are questions about the traffic increase. I also tried to reach out to the state to find out about the left-hand turn lane at fifty-three Whitney, because that's a state road, that's a state light. And right now, even today, coming home at four thirty, I didn't want to take a left to turn there, I went past that down to the six more to turn, to turn again into Elton. So there are some outstanding concerns that even though the police commission had a one-line report, I'd like to see those numbers and when I reached out last week, I was told. That, yes, you all would have their report to be able to include in making your decisions, I think, a little bit more than one line, a little more information of what the traffic is and what was. So, thank you all for listening to our concerns and respectfully, I know that the property owners do want to develop something. And if I was a property owner with almost two acres in the downtown area, that would be wonderful and if it weren't for the town to make something fit, that would be great, but. Increase it to the extent that this is, it does not fit and really would like more to, to have people back.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you very much. I know some of the people here.
Name and address?
John Schmucker, two forty-five Raymond Avenue. So, little bit of background, a lot of people know our house was described by Seventy-Sixth Colonial, fully restored in the center of Bethel. My family has lived in Bethel for sixty-five years, I'm the second generation to have the house, put a lot of money, bought the house, people love, love Bethel. I hope to be in the town of Bethel, and I'm in the transit district, I'm in the TOB, I think maybe there's one member that's in the transit district because no one else is in the transit district here that I know of. I'm also. Member of the library board, so we're facing issues of parking across the street, but it may be even worse here very shortly. And the other thing is, I was also a member of the PNC, so for years, I sat here at these tables, I was on planning its own, it's on the board, you know. So I sympathize with your doing it and I really appreciate what you guys, it's a lot of time and effort, I can guarantee when you walk out, some people will be happy in the decision, some of it may be very unhappy. So I understand all of that, again, I appreciate what you do. Um, I think that understanding the transit oriented district is kind of critical, thank you for your comments earlier about, because these are guidelines put in place. Now, it's, when it states in there, it states that, one of the things I think that is critical for the time of battle consider is that essentially, when you go into the guidelines, because you guys know them well. Secondarily, that it states that were to do this, all the necessary infrastructure has to be in place for transit oriented district, they were detailed. Extensively in that large report that you guys have copies of and I've read it, there's a lot of thought, but it states that you can't do an expansion. Build all these other properties and apartments until you have all the infrastructure in place, what infrastructure do you need? I'll start with one that's really basic, okay? Starts that making necessary search improvements are roads, sidewalks, street gates, downtown parking, pedestrian bike friendly environments to accommodate growth is a critical element. You're putting something into a transit district, so you're asking to put this property into that, and the infrastructure isn't in place, let's start with number one, which is sidewalks. So, this is your plan. So this is your plan, put it on. Now leave copies to everybody here. So they're asking, because it starts with a train station, it's a transit oriented. I'm talking about people walking to a train station. So first of all, the distance is one point two miles. Nowhere, nowhere in transit oriented district. We talked about somebody one point two miles, but they ever walked it? It's incredible distance. I don't think anyone here on a night like tonight walked from that property in Seventy Whitney all the way down to the train station. That's the purpose of transit, to have people walk. Sidewalks, these are your sidewalks. Everything here is a deficiency. They're not in place. Fifty percent of there, there are no sidewalks. Zero. Second place on top of it, the red on all these are what they're in poor condition. Part of your plan states that that has to be improved before you develop it. You need the infrastructure. So there's no infrastructure. If you left this property, Seventy Whitney, there's no sidewalks. You got Diamond Avenue, there's nothing there. They're not even in the neighborhood they're in. These are all deficient. So the infrastructure that you need for this, if it were to happen, it's not in place. Sorry, it's never been developed. So sidewalks are an issue. Distance, one point two miles is an issue. Sorry, about half a mile. You can't walk it. Not going to happen. The other thing is that I think the reason people don't know the history of Bethel. I do, a lot of it, having grown up at two forty five Newwood Avenue. Is that Simpah Brook that runs right behind this property. Does anyone know the classification of Brook? Everybody know it? D E E B? Nobody knows, right? It's a class five. So let me explain what class five Brook is. We have class thirty units, people sitting out. We're going to talk about greenwashing, about bitches and sitting by the Brook and we walk by. It doesn't smell too good. Reason why is it's a class five waterway. Class five waterway means it's unsuitable habitat for fish, waterfowl, aquatic life, and any recreation. Reason why it's that, right? Because we pollinated it for years. Starts at the Bethel dump, where it originates, which is closed up. It feeds into the Simpah, runs past Vandergrift Chemical, runs down underneath two ad factories years ago. There was an ad factory pumping something. Were you smelling it?
Yes.
And then it goes all the way down across Diamond Avenue, goes down to Whitney. Let's not smell like a hundred thousand.
It's a lot of methane, but.
And there's a lot of mercury and a lot of. It's just wetlands. And it's wetlands too. So you got wetlands and pollution. So although it may look nice, there are some environmental issues and wetland issues. Same thing's going to happen on Diamond Avenue. So it's a class five. It's contaminated. The other thing is, if you look at the town's water and sewer, let me quote from your plan development. Plan development statement from the Public Works Department says, there is no more capacity in town's sewer system. Proud, because you have to put a lot of infrastructure. You put a lot of parkings in town. And guess what? People work from home now, so they're not using their toilets, the office, they're using it at home. They have a bunch of apartments across the street, West Street, all over town. Lot of stress on the infrastructure of town, with water and sewer. The request is, people know it, three thousand two hundred gallons a day. Three thousand twenty gallons a day. When these people are living in this, do people live in their houses? Do people live in your houses? You're going to pump in three thousand two hundred more gallons, because we already stress water and substances. It's not too much. If you look at the facts of this, do you guys like to deal with facts of what's going to go? Three thousand two hundred gallons of stress system, water.
Excuse me, Jeff, just for a second.
Sorry.
I made a correction on that.
Yeah, but.
Um, only because it the world has changed a little bit since you were on playing its own information.
Thank you.
Sewer and water is determined prior to anyone walking into this door. And it's done by the Public Utilities Director and Public Utilities Commission.
Thank you.
Okay.
What they're saying is.
What they're saying is we have it.
Enough capacity? Okay, thank you.
No problem. But you were really emphasizing it and I'm sorry, I just had to correct you.
I appreciate that. But I'm not on Public Works Austin, and I did see it was approved by the public. But I think it's worthwhile to note that, in fact, in an R R ten neighborhood, and I'm not in the, I don't live in the neighborhood where you guys are, but on post five. Basically, that you could do something else in a residential neighborhood other than putting in thirty apartments and then adding that much more to town about. If it was a residential neighborhood, you'd normal lot, but I wouldn't put a house. Who else? I'm going to ask anyone on that's commissioned, a simple question, and that is, again, I don't live in that neighborhood. But I'm really kind of upset, I mean, a longtime Bethel president, looking across this and saying, someone lived on Colonial Drive, lived a lane run into the streets you guys live on, and there was a vacant lot there, even in transit district, but someone walked in, wanted to put in thirty apartments? An R R ten neighborhood destroyed a neighborhood. When these people have split their lives, is their major invested in their life? Or you're going to basically destroy that investment? Well, tell me it's going to buy them value, it won't. It's a pretty bad set situation to do. You don't have to make the decision, do you? Don't have to make the decision. I hate to see neighborhoods destroyed. That's not what this transit piece is all about. How to destroy neighborhoods.
Okay, is there anyone else, please?
Perthurin from Thirteen Bullard Street. Already spoken, my opposition to this proposal, Seventeen. For multitude of reasons, I continue to oppose building a thirty unit single bed in apartment complex seventeen, which is owned by our town, single family, two family, not third. From a personal standpoint, this project will have negative impact on my property value and my quality of life. This project is currently proposed, will seek significant excavation of hillside along the western edge of the property, which acts as an actual buffer between Seventy Whitney and my property at Thirteen Bullard Street. This explanation is proposed to accommodate significant number of parking spaces along the western edge of the property. Parking in this area will be near feet from my master bedroom, imagine the noise and light pollution. Additionally, the idea of incorporating emergency access for East West Wall Street is unjustified and unnecessary. Seventeen Whitney already has two means of access to this and is accessible from both Whitney and Elton. Emergency access regress to a dirt street is not necessary. There is this board to refer to the preamble of the town zoning regulation. This project does nothing to improve or enhance the community character or improve the economic value of general welfare for the surrounding properties, nor will there be three and a half, three and a half four inch strategy against the community attack. Please say no to Seventeen Whitney. It's purely proposed. Thank you for your time.
Again, Nick Allison, Thirteen Fawn Road. Uh, my brother was on that desk and he spoke last meeting, and I want to speak about the TOD. The TOD had lots of public hearings. It was adopted. There was public hearings. Everybody voted on it. And this board chose to to adopt the TOD. This gentleman is is asking to play by the rules. He saw the TOD, he said, okay, I want to build a project. He's going by the rulebook. You can't change the rulebook in the middle. If you guys don't like the TOD now, change it. But you can't, when there's an active application out, you can't change the rules. If you're losing, you can't have another quarter on the football team. If this fits the regulations, then you should approve it by the regulations. There's more than enough parking spots. There's more than enough green. There was concept picture done early on and you all nodded your head. Yeah, 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 we like it. Now you're going to say we don't like it. So I have a problem with that. The TOD regulations was adopted, it went through the whole process. I love that all the neighbors are coming out, but that was time. I know it's your backyard now, but the time was when the TOD was was presented to the town and we all voted on it. We had our chance to vote on it and it was voted on. So that's all I have to say about the TOD and and I appreciate all the neighbors coming out for it. Thank you.
Miles compared to that. Cynthia McCorpendale, Nineteen Elton Avenue. So with due respect to Mr. Ellis, who is a friend of mine, I'll say that.
Please object to the chairwoman. Please, thank you.
You know, there are a lot of things that you vote on or decide that are subject to change. And what Mr. Bagda said about the idea of human scale, this is all in the TOD. And the rules are the rules, but then there's an aesthetic component that goes along with it. And for the life of me, I think what maybe put people over the edge is the thing that is across from this building. Because it it kind of dwarfs the library, which I never talked about this. No, I understand, but it's it's tying in.
It is not tied in. We are dealing with a separate. We are dealing with independent, separate property and applicant. I'm sorry, interrupt, madam.
But you must.
But this is.
Please don't, don't interrupt.
I I'm speaking to the chair.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
To the chair, but please continue with my public input. I tying it in as a spirit of Bethel itself, so it is not, I'm not taking it out as a specific project. But they need that as a name. Everyone said what it is. You know, the thing that comes to my mind, it's like, okay, so you have this rulebook, but it's sort of like, you know, the ugly stepsisters trying to cram their feet into Cinderella shoes. I mean, it just doesn't work. And you can, as people have said, develop something that is more, you know, is more gentle to the neighborhood, and you can still be a millionaire. That's the thing. So if you're just going for the money, big money banner, you're going to get thirty units and you'll be collecting that cash every month. But on the other hand, if you did some kind of townhouses or smaller buildings, you sold some, you rented something. There are ways to do it that are just in your face, you know, Godzilla in Tokyo. So I just feel really strongly about this and I think that it's it's really, it's almost, no, it is, it's insulting to the neighborhood because you don't know the neighborhood. It's obvious you don't know the neighborhood. I'm not speaking to, not the pale, but the people who are designing this. You know, I mean, the property owner had very quiet bulldozers sitting there for thirty years, so, you know, we just sort of drove by. So now it's activated, but, you know, yes, live in the neighborhood, you know. I'm just saying, you really have to take the neighborhood into consideration. You wouldn't have this much pushback if it wasn't a big thing. So that's it.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Jeff Polloba, Three Summit Lake.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, okay. Uh, Jeff Polloba, Three Summit Lake. I understand the neighbors' concerns based on the different meetings I've gone through. Again, as Mr. Ellis mentioned, the property owners didn't decide to make your property TOD, the town did, right? So it seems like they probably have a lot invested in working with the town based on the architect and the engineer's design that it seems like they've already been in communications with the town, they've kind of designed the building like that. As I, the architect pointed out, they've kind of worked it over the years to kind of comply more, make it more friendly. So I, again, I understand the concern about the size of the building again, but that's kind of, it seems like that's kind of what the town was pushing based on the interactions of that. Also, the current, the current property is, as Cynthia pointed out, it gets a lot with a huge garage, right? It's not like you're tearing down a three bedroom home. It's a, again, large garage, or you guys set up a little sidewalk. So as far as keeping with the neighborhood, should it look more like a big garage? Or or maybe behind it, you have gulps in their their storage trailers and their gravel pits, which is the majority of the property border skull. So should it look like that? You have Mariano's on the other side. I think obviously the entrances on this road, but you're kind of focused on these, again, single to three family homes. Not, again, the other piece of the property, you have other buildings. So to to pick a design that's something that fits in the neighborhood, again, it's not a standard, like you mentioned Colonial Drive or something where it's all Colonials, right? It's it's a unique neighborhood where you have different buildings. So I don't know how you style it to fit in with the neighborhood again, unless you fit it in with the garage that's there. And also, as it seems like it's already passed all the other permissions based on what Beth said as far as public utilities. So I don't see any issues with the sewer, water, things like that. So it complies with everything else. I mean, it's almost like you're penalizing them. And again, I know how everybody votes. But it's almost like being penalized for other recent projects because people have complained about. Which I don't like the neither some of them, but again, I don't, you know. And I just just find the whole process interesting, that's all. Because again, it's this unique spot in town, right? So anyway, that's kind of my thoughts. Again, from the beginning, they they decide, they're not the ones that made this TOD. It seems like now they're being, as Mr. Ellis pointed out, then was the time to go to the meetings, right? To determine, as you mentioned, it's one point two miles to the property. Again, they didn't decide to make it there. They didn't factor in, all right, well, how long is it going to take if we turn this city away and get to our property? That's the town's decision. So it seems like most of the people have an issue with the TOD. And as a result, this property, which maybe you should have done a more attorney before or redesigned the TOD before you allow these applications. But I'm I'm just a little confused, I guess, how the process works, given the current thing that's already active, the other potential projects in town. But anyway, that's just kind of my point.
Thank you, Senator. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Would you want to check on, on Zoom?
Yes. So for anyone who, for anyone that wants to offer public comments and is participating in this meeting over Zoom, you will do what's called raising your hand. There is an icon at the bottom of the Zoom app. There's a toolbar and where this icon is located, it's the reactions icon. Clicking on that icon brings up an option for you to do what's called raising your hand. And raising your hand establishes a queue for us, so that way we can process your public comments orderly. I would remind anyone who wants to offer public comments, please have your full name as as your participant icon and state your name and address for the record.
I don't see anyone.
I see Diane Ryan.
Oh, you do? All right. Diane, would you like to speak? Speak, please. Give your name and address.
Sure. Diane Ryan, Thirteen Karen Drive. One thing is, I noticed that my letter that I read and sent to you last time is not in the records, not in the online records, so I'm just giving you that information that you need to put that on there. And maybe other people's letters aren't on there. I'd like to also, as Allison had mentioned, the police report just is, you know, doesn't talk anything about doing a traffic study. You know, as schools start, that's going to be a different situation. I don't know when they looked at it or what they did, but just having it in a memo like that seems like it's incomplete. And also, you know, requesting that the state take a look at the, you know, making turns onto their, onto Whitney. And my other question was, the public works situation as far as what Beth had mentioned about looking at, that they look at the sewer and water and they have to approve it. My question is, when is that done? Because, you know, you may approve this project and then they'll look at the sewer and water and say, this, we just can't accommodate this. And then the town has to do something with the sewer and water, which will be in our taxes. So I just don't understand how that process works if, you know, looking at that.
So I excuse me for interrupting. I just want to, when I can quickly put an end to something, I will with that. The fact is, this has to go to the Public Works Department, to the Utilities Commission, prior to them making application, which I think they made application in June. They have to get their approvals by them for sewer and water before they even submit an application to the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's how it works.
Okay, so you're saying, so you're saying that they've already approved it?
That's correct.
Okay, that that wasn't clear from what you said before. So so they're basically saying that they can accommodate thirty more units with that number of gallons and washer dryers and everything else. Or, you know, wash.
That's correct. That's what they're saying.
Okay. Then the other question that I have is, you know, last time you mentioned that the architecture, you know, is, or they've mentioned, someone did, that it's a guide. And, you know, who who finalizes the actual? And, you know, who who finalizes the actual, you guys, let's say you approve this project, who decides what materials are used on the building and what it's going to look like in the long run? Because, you know, I I noticed just from the project downtown that it doesn't look like what they initially showed on their drawings. So, you know, even as far as the colors of the facade. So my question is, who is going to finalize and approve the architecture? If you guys approve this, you're not approving the architecture, you're not approving what it looks like. So who does that? That's my, that's my questions.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes, I'm seeing Paula Antolini about.
Paula. Paula, would you like to give your name and address, please?
Hi, Paula Antolini, Jacobs Lane in Bethel. I was wondering if the, each member of the Planning and Zoning Board could indicate to the public how these multi-unit buildings benefit the neighborhood that they're being put in. We're talking about the ones on Whitney Lane tonight, and I think Cindy Lane, I'm sorry, Whitney Road and Cindy Lane. But there are a lot of others that have already been approved. So my question to the board, and I'd love to hear from each member, is that what makes you approve these projects? Why do you think it's going to be beneficial for Bethel? I I realize what the TOD is, you don't have to explain that, the walkability and all of that. But it seems like the individual projects in the little neighborhoods, in these two blocks in particular, I think these are the smallest blocks lately. How how are you voting yes? What are you basing your yes on? What are you seeing that's going to be beneficial to the homeowners and the safety of neighborhood and all of that? Could we have, hear from each member possibly?
Excuse me, Paula. Excuse me, Paula, in regards to your question, asking the commission to make comments in regards to TOD, they are in the middle of a public hearing process with an application in front of them that is involved within the TOD district. They're not at liberty to discuss with the general public at this point in the application process or give their opinion to you personally on their own thoughts.
I I'm not asking them to comment on this project.
Close of the public hearing, when they're in discussion dealing with seventeen Whitney Road. The application on the dot at right this moment is seventeen Whitney Road, not the TOD. Seventeen Whitney Road.
I'm not asking about this.
Not TOD.
You're misinterpreting my question. My question was, why does each member on the Planning and Zoning keep voting yes on the multiple unit projects in the smaller neighborhoods? And and how is that benefiting the town of Bethel? That's my question, I'm not asking.
Your question, it has no relate, it is not related to the application in front of the commission. It is a question that you would be certainly available to ask them at a later point in the meeting. In regards to the two properties that you mentioned, one was seventeen Whitney Road, which is under the TOD and the regular zoning regulations. The other project that you made reference to is Sixth City Lane, which has no bearing on any zoning regulations within the town of Bethel. It is an affordable housing project under section eight dash thirty G of the state statutes.
It's related in the way of the size of the project. I don't think that residents, you know, decipher all of the rules. They just know that a large building is going on a a block full of very small homes, which, you know, somebody mentioned sidewalks, there are no sidewalks in most of these places. And another gentleman mentioned, was it a mile and a half? That the road was a mile and a half away, which is a pretty long walk. I used to walk over a mile to school, so I know what that feels like.
Thank you, Paula.
I I'm wondering why you're, I I can't finish. I think a lot of people spoke out longer than I did. I'm just trying to understand why I can't get an answer from any commissioner about, okay, you're saying they can't make a general comment? So then can they make a comment on this project that we're discussing tonight? If you're saying I'm asking about all other things? I I'd like to understand, I'm just trying to understand why the Planning and Zoning Board is moving forward on all these projects? Because people don't know why. They don't understand it.
Point of order, I'm sorry, point of order. You're at the chair, there's all this dialogue going on. I can call point of order. Yes. You're at the chair. I don't know if you use what Robert's rules, but it's because.
Yes, we do. And this is, this is our planning and zoning official.
Okay, fair enough, I thought you were at the chair. That's what I thought, because we mentioned that.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I just, one one small thing. Simply, I'm on this commission, I've been here for quite a while. And what you're asking for is putting this commission out of order. We are talking about one application, Whitney Road, right now. We are not saying yes, we are not saying no. We are in the discussion mode right now. And for you to ask us to, how are we going to vote? Right now, i- i- it's not right, and I'm sorry, I have to ask you to please step down.
Okay, Kitty, but I wasn't asking you how, I would never ask how you were going to vote. Okay, I'm just, you know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand how this.
Needs to be clarified right this moment.
Thank you.
You've mentioned incorrectly that we were in a discussion. We are not in the discussion. We are in the act of having a formal public hearing, accepting testimony from residents and applicants. And every once in a while, I, as your staff, will intervene and correct something if it is going off in a direction that could be pulled back to the nature of the subject before you.
My, my, what I said, discussion, I'm at.
I know.
Thank you.
Okay, I I am a resident and I I would like to make a comment. I won't ask you to answer any more questions. I'd just like to say, and I will repeat, that the public does not understand, I talk to many people a day, the public does not understand why you are seeing that these projects, these large projects, are going to benefit Bethel. That's my statement, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
I am not seeing anyone at this time that has their hand raised.
Okay, do you have any comments on the questions you've heard, Mr. Miziko?
No, I just, I think one thing, when we talk about, there's a couple of good comments about, I guess, natural order and a transition, a progression from, you know, within zones. So typically, you're going to see industrial zone, correct? And then outside the industrial zone, you're probably going to drift into a commercial zone. Beyond the commercial zones, you probably get into like a high-density residential. Then you're going to get into a lower density, like a two or three family, where then you'll finally get into a single-family residential. So here in this case, we have industrial right next door, and we also have the the low-density residential. And this is sort of, you know, higher-density residential, no question. So that's sort of a natural transition from an industrial zone. You don't have the commercial in between, but you, it is a sort of a natural progression into that type of zoning. You're just seeing zoning that's there. So it's not like we're plugging it down and there's a, you know, this two-family zone all the way around. That's, that's my.
Chris, you have anything you want to add?
Just a very minor comment. I actually did do work on Whitney Road. The actual address is fifteen Whitney. Converted an existing single residential to a two-family. So I've been on that road quite a few times, I know the neighborhood. And while we designed for that particular project, he wanted to do multifamily, he didn't have the room. And he's exactly adjacent to the big retaining wall there. He told me many times, I can't stand looking at this garage on this nice little addition off for a single family or two-family or whatever. And all they're looking at is trucks, equipment, piles of sand, and a big ugly commercial garage. So I just want to say that, that's just right next door to it.
Thank you.
I have, if I'm allowed to ask a question, direct question.
Well, you can ask us.
Can I ask? Okay, Alice, Saint Germain, fourteen Elgin Avenue. There's been a lot of talk about the two methods of accessing the property. And obviously with the size of the building and potentially up to about fifty-four parking spaces right now. What we've seen on the plans is, forgive me if I'm getting this incorrect, but the stone pillars where they are right now is the one that the driveway coming in. And right now, there's no promise of any egress at the back to Paul Street. And so I know there is some discussion right now, there's two driveways that are coming into this property. So to come in one to allow another. In a previous meeting, I said that the two streets, Elgin and Whitney, are the two methods of accessing the property. I would disagree because right now you've got two stone pillars that you can't really go through on your side. And you're building out the side and around with parking. So there is a really big concern here with the size and scope of the project, that it's not able to support some basic necessities for access to egress. And so that is a really big concern, because I know we keep talking that people will walk, people will walk downtown or take their bikes, and they may. But probably those fifty-four spots will be filled. And so there is a big concern, a health and safety concern for for that property. And so I haven't seen that addressed with the the redone and redrawn plans. And so again, with the size and scope that's being presented, if we still have that one driveway in with the stone pillars, it's just very, very large and that people will come in. So those are big concerns for the neighborhood.
Sure. So it's important to go nicely to Elgin Avenue, because it's tied into what Alice said about, it's about parking. And it reminded me on the property walk. And maybe I'm wrong, maybe there's a buffer at the fence where twenty-five Elgin is. But I thought I understood that the parking would go up right pretty much that stoppage fence, which is my neighbor at twenty-five, just buts up against their bedroom. So I'm just thinking about slamming park doors. Yeah, okay, so we just.
No, I'm just, I'm visualizing.
Okay. And so when she was talking to me about that, I looked at his house and it was about, looked like it was about six feet away from the stoppage fence. So that's concern too, is about the level of noise when people are coming in and out for the for the properties around there. So and and just one comment about what the architect said about the transition, I think that they go backwards. So, you know, if you want to transition to more industrial, go that way, I don't know. It just, it seems very, each is a discrete zoning of some sort. You know, like they seem to be three separate things, I don't see any transition. It's just my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you.
Again, not to keep everybody here all night, but we talked about Interst.
Name.
I'm sorry, Nick Ellis, again, thirteenth Fawn Road. You know, I know this neighborhood, I ran a business right around the corner, I drove this forklift up and down for twenty-something years. There's been no issues with 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 the the traffic on that, with the bike riding. I appreciate the neighbors, but there's been two neighbors that once spoke at this meeting, the first one, that ripped their sidewalks out. After this hearing is going to happen, I'm going to ask the town to make them put the sidewalks back. Everybody's talking about there's no sidewalks, but two residents felt the need to take the sidewalks out. So it can't be that dangerous of a neighborhood. There's a thirty apartments with single family, doesn't seem like a big draw when public utility said it's good, wetlands said it's good, the police said it's good. These are people that are salary employees that everybody's asked. And it's great the neighbors are talking about it, but to rip out two sidewalks, it can't be that dangerous of a neighborhood. That's it.
Thank you.
Wayne Ritter, twenty-two Elgin Avenue. I just feel that this building is just way too big for our neighborhood. Pretty much all I've got to say, you know? It's thirty, thirty apartments, twenty-five and, what is it now, what do you have, seventeen? That's just too much. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Okay, did you? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr.
Our third, thirteen Willow Street. Again, I just want to comment on the extreme western edge of the property. It was, it's supposed to have roughly fifteen parking spaces. Those fifteen parking spaces are like right on top of my house, right on top of my master bed. And you're talking about now, you know, possibly this emergency egress, which appears to be right along my property line. I'm not sure if it is going to be accessed from both property or my property or the combination of both. But the answer to your question, if it's going from my property, I will never bring it access.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure there appears to be a BJ Liberty on Zoom that has their hand raised.
BJ, would you like to?
Sure. I just, I just want to connect with something that Mr. Schmucker said, as well as something that Mr. Ellis said. I did, huh?
Name and address.
Oh, sorry, BJ Liberty, eight Grand Street. So I did go to all those TOD meetings. And one of the things that is in the TOD plan, in fact, it's on page seventy-three of the plan, is a map that shows two automobile overpasses that would take care of some of the traffic in the TOD. Mr. Schmucker was talking about infrastructure. Well, certainly, you know, the state has not approved automobile or, you know, they have not approved formally, I don't think, the pedestrian overpass either. So without those overpasses over the railroad tracks to connect the east side to the train station, I don't think you actually have a TOD on that side of the the tracks. And it was discussed that it was important to have that, but you don't have it, you just don't have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mike, is there anything you'd like to address? We're talking about, sorry, Ms. Jermaine was talking about the entrance, the one or two entrances.
Well, no, I, the fire marshal had asked, and Beth, early on, had said that they had always looked in the study or the TOD thing was a connect, connecting through to Paul Street. So that's where we provided the means of getting access out there. Although we're very limited because we don't own the property that connects out to the right-of-way hall. But with regard to his other comments about the two means of egress, specifically says roads. My response was that there is two roads that you can access this property. You can come in from Whitney, Whitney's block, you can come in through Elgin and vice versa. And we show that with the traffic vehicle turning movements, you can get the aerial truck in and back out and drive out of the property. And again, just to reiterate, you know, you talk about safety, and there's probably nothing more safe than having sprinklers entirely in your building.
Chair, Diane Ryan on Zoom appears to have raised her hand. Okay.
Ms. Ryan?
Hi, Diane Ryan, thirteen Karen Drive. I just wanted to, Nick Ellis mentioned about people taking out their sidewalks. And I was at the walkthrough of the of the property. And there was discussion by neighbor neighbors that those were unsafe because they were in there for many, many years. And they were a safety hazard because people were tripping on them and the town did not do anything with the sidewalks. I think it's the town's responsibility to have the sidewalks done. So I just wanted to mention that, that anybody that, and I don't, because I don't know if any of the neighbors are here that were represented at that time when we were at the walkthrough. But they did mention that, you know, some were even under the grass because they're not being taken care of. And and I believe that's the responsibility of the town, not not of the neighbors. Just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Diane.
Do I, do I get to respond?
You can.
Someone asked a question of who decides what materials to review?
What happens is that once the commission has approved, say, the commission approves an application, there's another process where it's reviewed once again by the town architect and staff prior to the issuance of a building permit to ensure that the materials used and the design that was done meets the approval. In regards to what was just said about the sidewalks, speaking as a Bethel native, and familiar with that area, the sidewalks that are installed, they were installed many, many years ago. I will not tell you how many because that would reveal how old that was. But number two, sidewalks, the maintenance of sidewalks are the responsibility of the property owner.
Okay. Anything else? No?
Come back.
Oh, no, absolutely. Okay, so, commission. All, Tammy, would you like to start?
I can start.
Please do.
I'm gonna start. First thing, I take fifty-three home every night. I made a point the last two weeks, make left on the Whitney. There's a few times tonight I made it without stopping. I made it right through. A few times you end up sitting there for a light. So I appreciate your concern making that left. I also understand it's a state road, so trying to get the state to do anything other than that is gonna be brutal. I do have a question about the emergency exit. This gentleman made it clear that he would never grant access. I'm not a hundred percent sure if that leads to his property or the adjacent property. But I think having emergency access that goes to nowhere is useless. There is that the, I believe the property has two entrances now, one more on Whitney, one right on the corner. Is it an option to keep the two entrances and shift parking around a little bit? I agree with Mr. Ellis that if there's a proposal that fits the town regulations, B, as a commission, shouldn't move goalposts, whether you agree with it or not. It's not for me to say right now how I feel about TOD. Let's talk about it. But as far as the proposal in front of us, it fits the ranks. Hopefully we massage it a little bit. That's all I got for now.
My concern, I don't, I don't really have any questions. I do have a concern. And my concern is how, how do you see this project fitting in with the neighborhood? I brought this up at the last meeting. When we had our walkthrough, I made a point to say we need to look at the property from the outside, from the neighborhood perspective. And I, I'm still wondering how you think that this property, that this project fits in with the neighborhood. I think the idea of transition from, you know, the, the way you put it, there is not a transition. It just, to my mind, it just doesn't exist. And I wonder about fitting in with the neighborhood. I apologize, I went onto my phone because I needed to Google something. Supreme Court Justice Carter Stewart said, and I'm gonna paraphrase this badly, as far as fitting in with the neighborhood, I can't define what it is, but I can't say what it isn't. And I wonder, I wonder about that. I also have a question of how does such a large project, and this is massive, I have no problem with developing on that property. I think that the owners and the developers have an absolute right to develop on that property. It's just sitting there. I think, you know, when you have an eyesore in the neighborhood long enough, it becomes your eyesore, I think. And I think that's what's going on here. But how does this project, this massive project, in these small, I mean, no insulting people on Elgin that make these really adorable quirky houses? I mean, they're just really adorable, you know, kind of Albuquerque, kind of New Mexico, unique kind of things. Just exhausts everything. How does this project fit into the neighborhood? And what are, what is the developer doing to enhance the neighborhood? It's one thing, it's one thing just because you can, doesn't mean you should. But if you're, and if you're going to, I think it's incumbent on at least bringing something to the table, so to speak. So. That's all I got. Just, just, just Stewart, I'm so sorry. He's, he's rolling around going that. Was it?
Wasn't that poor?
It was insanity, yes.
Just to make sure my.
Let's just finish up. Yeah, you got it. I apologize, I swear. Rob Ross.
Um, I don't really have any questions. I think everything's been covered here. I have plenty of comments about those, those are the primary place for, so I'll pass.
Yeah, Kimmy.
I will say that I think there's no doubt, appreciate a really nice job, right? Wonderful, great building, somewhere else. I think, you know, is it in the TOD? Yeah, it's in the TOD. Do I agree with the TOD? Maybe not in this case. I don't think the idea was ever to be able to drop a giant building in an area where you're gonna destroy it. And we can debate whether it's destroyed or not, but to me, again, looking at it from the perspective of the neighborhood, TOD, there's tenants of the TOD to say that, you know, thoughtful design and, and, you know, you want to make things fit in. This doesn't fit in. Neither does a lot of crossing the fence. Again, different story, but so I don't think I agree with the TOD in general. We're calling it the TOD so we can get to the train station and go nowhere, right? So I mean, we're, after you walk the one point two miles, you can get almost nowhere reasonably, right? It's not, we're focusing on this train to nowhere. So. I guess that's, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Linda Cruz?
Well, it is a very nice design. I, I think it's much better than the, the two buildings, especially with the setback on the road. I think it looks a whole lot better than the garage that's there right now. But I have to agree with the consensus that it's just, it's, it's too much. Thirty units, potentially sixty cars on a very tight neighborhood. I, I just don't see it working. And the three stories also not fitting in with the neighborhood. But thank you for the work that you've done.
Thank you, Linda. Ken Harson?
Got a couple of comments. As a general rule, developers and builders will build to the maximum potential of any piece of property. Maximize the most amount of money that they can make off of property. This is a classic example. What we have here is a combination of between ethics and money. Do we want to have them make as much money as possible and ignore the ethics or morality that comes with a project of this size and this name? That's what we need to ask ourselves today and the days coming. Just hand sketching here, I could certainly see six, possibly more, small houses that could fit in there. Whether they're age appropriate or not is a different issue. So I have no fault of the size of the building, the way it looks. It's just, we just have to decide whether it's something we're gonna have to look.
Thank you. Bob Legner?
Right now.
I guess I mess with myself. I've looked at it, and as I said, everybody has said, the design of the building is absolutely beautiful. But a three-story building in a neighborhood of the size of the house sits there, I, I, I think is appropriate. The TOD says one thing, and yes, it does say that you can allow that. However, it doesn't say that that has to be applied to every single property. So I think what we have to do is have a lot of discussion in our work sessions and see where we're going and how we're getting there. Okay. That? Anything else we should ever, should we, can we close this?
You can close it here.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna say that I'm gonna close this hearing. Consensus, are we all there? I, this hearing is closed.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Okay. Could we take a break? I lose that we take about a two or three minute break.
I wanna get my.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Coming back. Okay. We are going to start our business meeting. And for this business meeting, I am going to seat under Curtis for Ken. And I'm going to seat Rob for which tenant?
Aziz.
Aziz. Okay, first item on our agenda are the minutes of seven twenty-six, twenty-two.
Second.
I'd like to make the correction on the minutes. And I was present at the meeting until about eight oh five, when I was called away literally in the meeting.
Thank you.
Eight oh five, she was present until eight oh five.
Okay, so she didn't stay?
No, she wanted you to note that she was.
That she was here.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion yes. We have any invoices? Yes, we do. The news times? News times and the amount of eight hundred nineteen dollars and seventy-two cents.
Is that proposed?
Yes, it is.
Make a motion to pay the current invoice from the news times.
Have a second? Thank you, Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Sandra, motion yes. Then we have our work session for Gopia, six, six singulane, advised application under section eight thirty GH.
I'd like you to note for the record in the oval drive, there's a little test stating that we will be taking up that matter in its final form on September thirteenth. Consensus, just please note it for the record.
Thank you. Okay. New business?
None.
Energy board?
I have none.
Commission comments?
None.
How about you, Mr. Legner, if you have a comment to make?
No, I'm good.
Yeah.
I think TOD needs more importance. And I'll leave it at that. In its entirety, since we're commenting. I'm sorry, no, that's it. I'm working sweet. Yeah. I, I understand where, where some people have said that, you know, we don't have the T, we don't have the transit. But I don't think that negates what the whole point of transit was, was walkable. And I don't think that that's gone away. And, you know, I, I think the desirable for a walkable community is, is still, you know, a pretty generally help by, by most people. And, and to me, that's always been the core of TOD, more so than the transit. You know, the transit's gonna change, right? We might have other cars in a hundred years. But what we do with the land, probably, you know, it, it's not gonna be as tied to, you know, technology or anything like that. And I don't think, you know, Amazon, be damned, we're still gonna have retail businesses and the density of people. We're still going to have that, you know, the, you know, quality of life, of health, and people being able to walk in a community. And I think those parts of TOD are still valid. I don't think any of that's.
I would agree to most of everything you've said. And I've been a tread lightly here, it's a project in front of us, so I'm trying to not include that. But I will say, the reason I would like to work for him on it is because I don't want it to be abused. Because I feel like it has a high potential to be abused. I think it needs to be looked at, reevaluated. And until we get a chance to do that, I think it, before we get another project in front of us that we all love life, and then we're hamstrung by the regulations. That's where, that's where my thoughts are.
Like a comment to say, to me, it's a self-inflicted wound. It's, it's what eight thirty G, it's a state didn't want eight thirty G or something.
And that's what I'm saying, I think we have the opportunity to ask the commission to do something about it. We're eight thirty G constantly, or sit here, well, eight thirty G, what are we gonna do? We have an opportunity to do something about it. But I think while we're doing something about it, we should, we should full stop till we fix it.
Ask to receive the fact. I think that I think that just suggests that there is much transit in the area. COVID threw a very strong stone at local transit. My guess is that over the next couple of years, that's going to change. And there will be transit. Downderry is considering putting in a line. Don't understand this, but they're, they're talking about, you know, a line directly over the southeast side. I don't understand that. But I think that mass transit is going to become an major player as we look forward. I think that the TOD has done more to develop the downtown area of businesses. And yes, there are a lot of spaces that are empty, but I think it has done more to bring utilization back to downtown area, drive down, Saturday night at eight o'clock, and the restaurants are packed. It's wonderful, and there's music coming from all over the place. I think that part of the challenge, definitely, with this app, is that part of the TOD is the human scale doesn't get fitting in with the neighborhood. I would rather than call more touring and sort of, you know, reorganize kind of thing. I think that we perhaps maybe have just a couple of sessions where we just read that. And looking, so maybe we understand what TOD means. My husband's office was part of it, and it's, you know, very kind of, you know, the way it was laid out. But if more people tune in that area, I think more of us, I, I need, I need.
Yeah. I do have a comment.
Bob Legner, okay, go ahead, down, down, say it.
I think most of this discussion about TOD is for another night, not tonight. I don't think we need to review it all tonight or go over any feelings about it. Or even feelings about a review tonight. I think we ought to have a separate meeting dedicated to us trying to come up with the best possible solution to TOD.
I, I think, I, I think I agree with that totally, Bob. Thank you. Uh, and I, with a consensus, I think we all do. This is a conversation for another time after. And, and that's when we can do research and talk about it. For people that are in the room, our, our meeting meetings, unless you go into a second session, which is a really rare, right? I mean, really rare. The more business meetings are open in the venue, to the public. And, um, we're welcome. Absolutely. Well, we may not be able to accept the comments from the floor during those meetings. I think it gives people a little good idea of how the, how these deliberations want to take place and so just we're here and we are part of, our deliberations are part of the public. Just, just said commission comments. Our next line is toddler comments.
I, this is my questions earlier to that, that project. This.
I was gonna cut you off because of your better talk about.
Cynthia and I are unlikely, I mean, friendly neighbors, right? We completely different backgrounds, but in these past few weeks, we have been throwing ideas up there. Someone who knows me very well, where you just see me running through town, I can certainly tell you where the sidewalks are and aren't, and where you trip and why people took out ones or they didn't. But one of the things I thought would be really interesting, if we're thinking about Bethel development and transit oriented district, someone mentioned in a couple of these meetings, it's not just training, right? We have a bus system. So I was looking at heart buses and where could I, could I do without, and I can do without my cars, since I can work from home, but could I do my grocery shopping that I wanna do, get my kids to where I need to go? Could I just do like a heart bus transportation? My husband certainly could, because he works in downtown Ridgefield. If you want to know where the closest bus stop is, and he works in Prospect for here, it's down on Route Seven in Branchville. So for him to get to work, it's impossible, would be impossible for him to get to work taking public transportation without those. So I could run it, or I could probably run to all of your houses and I probably have. But I'm thinking, you know, I think that would be amazing thing for a challenge for me someday or for a week, is to literally just try to take the bus. Not drive somewhere, not run, because I could get there that way, but just take the bus. And wouldn't that be amazing to our residents in the transit oriented district? Can you get there from here, right? I went to school in Maine. That was a big joke. Well, you can get there from here. Well. I mean, that would be proof that there's work that needs to be done by the state, by the regional transportation, like places where we don't have that authority or input, right? Just to get a left turning lane, because it might make it easier to that, it's gonna be jumping through hoops. So those are some ideas, and I probably volunteer myself for all sorts of committees. I have a kid in high school, I keep going to Bethel's more time, but there's a lot of people's ideas that we could plug into those different things. I think could be really great discussions. So completely on a big broad scale.
Thank you.
And I just wanna echo that because I, I tend to think that, you know, we're rare things, we like our cars. But I have been to several different transit oriented districts and one, my sister lives in Fairfax, Virginia, and they have one there, and they just seem very sterile to me, just the way that some of them are built. And Bethel is anything but sterile. And I just think that we have to keep that in mind. It's just in, like I said, Elgin Avenue, it is quirky houses. So, you know, each neighborhood has its own, um, thing, and, and that's the whole charm of Bethel. And it's the TOD, I'm the one, I mean, I say that there's no T. And I say that only because the idea of TOD, I, as I understood it, was to build around like a hub, a transit hub. You would have a lot of industrial traffic, but you would also have access. And that's what TOD is, like, can you go without your car? That, that's the challenge.
Anyone on, uh, Zoom who would like to put a public comment?
I see a Diane Ryan that has her hand raised.
Diane Ryan.
Hi, Diane Ryan, thirteen Karen Drive. I just wanted to ask, um, the Cindy Lane proposal, the newest proposal. Do you have that online? Because I, I haven't been able to find those, those documents.
Cindy Lane, what was done with Cindy Lane, the decision was made, the decision was appealed. Um, we're in the middle of settlement with the applicant. So when it's going to appear, it'll appear on the agenda of the September fourteenth meeting, and that's usually posted a couple of days. For Diane, I think you know the office well enough. If you email me, I'll send you a copy.
Okay, so, so they haven't actually put in all of their papers for the second go around? I guess I just.
I received revised rights on Monday.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All in favor? Motion passed. Good night.